Put your eyes to the pledge. We're dedicators to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, thank you for coming. Could be worse, it could be tomorrow. Hold on, something else moving on. Uh, roll call, John Arch is here.
Joe Bailey here.
John Mullen here.
Alright, I've already had a motion to open the public bond hearing at six, three, zero. Second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, uh, again, thank you all for coming. In order for the town to vote on bond at our March sixteenth Saturday meeting.
Well, yeah, sixteenth, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We need to have at least one public hearing about it within a certain timeframe. It has to be at least, I don't know, ten days before and no more than sixty days before. So we're well within our limits and we could have another one if the need is there. Alright, Mr. Mullen, would you like to lead us off with all the work you've been doing on this?
Well, the work that I've been doing is looking at the needs of why do we have a, why are we looking to present a new highway facility? We've done this, this town has done this before, probably ten years ago, probably at least, ten and twelve years ago. And the most important thing, I think, and the board can laminate, what I have done for the board here is put together some financing figures, taken a look at different buildings. We have consulted just lately with the fire department on their needs in terms of a building. But the reason, the main reason for a new highway facility, the board believes, is that we need to move the fire department out of their inadequate, unsafe building. That building is forty years old. We have done some repairs to it, however, the most important thing probably right now is that it is very crowded. We have four vehicles that are in three bays. We have, uh, probably in that building, uh, probably somewhere between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars worth of equipment, is that right Chief, roughly? Most of that is apparatus, it's not the bulk gear, uh, the bunk gear, but it's art equipment. We have a new ambulance, two hundred thousand dollar ambulance coming. Uh, we have relatively new tankers and rescue vehicles, whatever they are, so it's very, they're very tight. And I tried to represent in your handouts there, the cramped quarters. In some of, in the two, the center bay where the ambulance is now and another, what is that vehicle called?
That's a rescue.
The what?
Rescue.
Okay, the rescue. Can't open the doors. So somebody has to get in there, squeeze in there, pull out, then somebody get in. That's not a safe operation, that slows things down. So there's very little storage in there for their equipment. Only, their only water source in the station is a spigot coming out of the floor. Been there since forever. We did add a trailer several years ago to provide a bathroom. But the bathroom is inadequate, it's in, needs repair. The trailer is starting to deteriorate. They have a lack of storage, their compressors and some of their equipment is in the open, unguarded. You can see in there that's, that between, on the outside bays, bay one and two, there's not a lot of room in there to move around. Their EMS materials are kept in a locker behind the ambulance, I believe, is that correct? Okay. That's not a good place to have medical supplies to be, it should be away from, from gas fumes and so forth and so on. There's no ventilation in there. We did upgrade the lighting a few years ago, it has helped. So the town, I think, over the years has thought that, um, to utilize and move them out of that building and provide some of their needs, that the ideal location and place is the highway garage. This is a picture that was taken, I think this was done in two thousand eight. This picture here. These are the fire, pieces of fire apparatus, and they haven't changed much in size. The ambulance isn't going to be any different in size than it is here. But they fit in there perfectly, they have plenty of room. They have, currently, there'd be enough room in here to provide a area for their bunker, their bunker gear to be away from the fumes of trucks when they start, or vehicles when they start. There could be, uh, there could be an enclosed room to put other storage in, their medical supplies. They could be closed off, if you were doored off, away from the building. You could add a ventilation system to this. There are two types of ventilation systems you can have. You've seen the new fire station with the hoses hanging down, that's one. That can be costly, but that is effective. Not necessary, but it's conduct, can be done. There are other ventilation systems that are just, um, an exhaust fan system with sensors that pick up, uh, gaseous, uh, toxic fumes. They are so sensitive that, uh, if you spray some brake cleaner on a particular device, the fans go on, they suck out all the material. They, they are very sensitive, and they, these aren't very expensive, uh, relatively. They're so sensitive, they, they will pick up, what, we, do we have any, we don't have any more gasoline vehicles in there, all?
New ambulance is gasoline.
Okay, new ambulance is gasoline. These new sensor systems, pick those up very quickly. But the, but the diesel, if you wait till I finish now, I'll answer a whole bunch of questions, please.
We're following this and...
What's that?
I'm finding that if we could follow this with you, it'd be a little easier.
Okay.
It's an absolutely marvelous handout and...
Okay, alright, very good. So, I was trying to give a general idea of where we're going, so I guess I was getting into the details where we shouldn't be too. So, so to understand what the current volunteer, the fire department is right now, as I mentioned before, we've got cramped quarters and so forth and so on. But just so you know, and Bill, you've crimped in here if I'm speaking anywhere, the Middleton Fire Department is a volun, and the EMS is volunteer only, we are not full-time. We do provide twenty-four hour call service, in other words, we're available. We also are available through mutual aid if we are not available, so that's there. Average EMS calls per week, this is based on your report for last year, is two point three a week. Average fire calls per week, that, that's all the fire, you know, the trees down, the structures, mutual aid, the, whatever it is, two point seven a week. The fire apparatus and the ambulance are temp, temperature sensitive. They need to be in, in a enclosed area, which they are now, and they need to have their, uh, air brakes and all lined up and powered up so that they can just take off, you don't have to wait for the air tanks to fill up. Fire station is nearly forty years old. We did fix the heating system, we did fix the roof, but it's not insulated properly. So, page two, um, the, uh, offices housed are in the temporary trailer. And if you look further on about the temporary trailer, outside storage of equipment is limited. And they've, they've got, got a storage set to the right, which, I don't know what has in it, what has, what's in there?
It's got like, um, an elbow board motor for a bolt, it's got some other equipment.
Okay, so, I mean, that's not a big deal, but they don't have a lot of room for storage. If you look in the back, um, they have no place to stick the chairs, they have chairs, they're outside. And you look at these pictures on page two, you can see how cramped those are. So if you go to page three, I'm sorry for the quality of the pictures, but, um, it's an HP printer, so I don't know what to say. If you look at, uh, there's not a lot of place for storage of their equipment. They're very cramped, if you look at the first picture to the left, I don't think that's three feet from the back of the vehicles to where they've stored equipment. Maybe four feet from the wall, but they have stuff there. And I, I don't mean that in a derogatory sense of even stuff, but they do have things. Page four, uh...
It's all odd numbers.
You have one, three, five, seven, nine.
It's an odd representation.
Who has the evens?
That's a printer, I'm sorry for that, I apologize. I tried to, I did it on, should have checked it, but I didn't. Page four, I'm sorry to do this, but page four shows, this is their compressor, and these are their air tanks and stuff, they're in the open, they should be guarded or closed. The highway department has all their compressors and they're stuffed in a separate room. So, so there's no chance of anybody falling into those things, or falling equipment into those things, although their compressor isn't nearly as big as the one in the highway department, it still, still could be a safety issue, okay? Right here, this is still on page four. That's their only water source, right there, it's right by the side door. And right now, it's, the pipe is, is suspect because it's rustling out. That's just a maintenance issue, I mean, I hope we don't have to dig it up, but that is it. That's been there forever, okay. Page, everybody got page five?
Woo-hoo!
Yeah.
Okay, this is the trailer, it's always been a temporary trailer. And the reason the trailer was put there, can you help me here, I can ramble for hours here.
We don't.
I was involved in getting the trailer to give some office space for the fire department.
And the toilet.
Trailer, and some place for some computers, okay? The town bought that used, the fire department fixed it up, I think some people from the highway department helped as well. If we ever move stuff around, I believe we could sell it or do something, I don't even have any intention of keeping it, that we get these buildings.
Before we had, before we had the trailer, correct me if I'm wrong, on page four, which you don't have, right? Uh, back here in the corner was where all their computers and, and communication equipment was. The hookups are still there, but they, they don't have, they're in the offices.
Okay.
So that trailer was, was done for that for a couple reasons besides giving them more office space and so forth and so on. They didn't have a wash facility, none. So after an incident, they had no place to wash up. And they, they should not have to go home and bring pathogens or whatever they're involved in any incident, whether it's a fire, an accident, or whatever. At least they should have a bathroom, at least wash their hands anyway, instead of taking it home. The bunker gear is just left there. One of the required, not a requirement, but I think it's probably a good requirement, is, and we've talked about this over the years, is it would, um, the bunker gear, I don't think has ever been cleaned, right? Never. So it should be cleaned. So, um, that, that's, that can be a problem. Okay, so, let's get back to the trailer. The temporary trailer is temporary. The septic system is suspect in terms of the hookup, that's all I'll say. The electrical is still, hope Eversource isn't here, temporary, okay? The trailer is not that insulated the best, the floor is starting to wobble a little bit, right? So the trailer, although has served a purpose, um, all that stuff in the trailer that is used now could be moved over to the highway garage. They might lose a little office space, but when we get into the highway garage, their highway garage going to, going to the fire department, there's an addition we can stick on there, okay? So what does a fire department need that's not there now?
Hey John, can I just say one thing about this, because I worked on this with you when we were... The state came down and told us, because the fire department, when they came in from, from a fire or anything, and they were contaminated, uh, we, they used to go in the old town hall and get cleaned up. Well, the state came down and said, no more. Keep them out of that old town hall, whatever they're bringing in there can be passed on to the public, and they can't go in there. So now, that's one of the reasons why we put that trailer in there, so they could have their own bathroom in there, but it's only one bathroom, like everybody knows.
The half bath.
Half bath. So that was something John and I worked on, to get at least a trailer over there where these guys had some kind of facility, because they weren't even allowed to go into the old town hall now to wash their hands or whatever, and they couldn't go in there with their bunker gear. So they were told to stay out by the state, and we got a, we got a letter from the state saying that.
Now, that being said, that's the current condition of the fire department as it stands now. Three bays, four pieces of equipment, not enough room, trailer is suspect. Okay, so what does the fire department need to improve the conditions that they work in, the safety of their members, and be more efficient with the equipment, and keep the equipment lasting longer? There's no decon, and I asked, what the heck is a decon provision? You go to an incident, there's no place, there's no shower to clean. Forget about the bunker gear for that, for the, for the time, for the second here. But there's no place for them to clean up. And we, we in this town, unfortunately, have expected them to go to an incident, take their bunker gear off, and then go home and shower in their own home.
By the way, decon is decontamination.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Lockdown.
Right. Marginal storage, I mentioned that when I was rambling on in the beginning. Marginal storage for EMS-sensitive medical equipment, that needs to be either in a CO cabinet or at least away from, uh, engine fumes and so forth and so on. No station ventilation or fire suppression, there's no fire security system in there. The only security system is the locks on the door. The training room is the station itself, although now they have the, uh, old town hall which they can train in, okay? It's an uninsulated forty-year-old structure, okay? Everybody at page seven?
Yes.
Okay. So, to correct the deficiencies, move the highway garage down there, move the fire department into the highway garage. Currently, the highway garage is a four-bay structure, let me say this, it's a...
Forty by sixty, I believe.
Forty by sixty. It's a very sound building, that building has been upgraded electrically, insulated. I'm not sure about the plumbing so much, but, uh, it, uh, we put a new ceiling in it, the lighting and so forth and so on. Right now, uh, the vehicles that are in there are in there, and what's in there are the three major dump trucks. The TriStar, which is a small little one, sits outside. They can get in there with the plows, but I can show you someplace, you can look at some of the old things, it's pretty tight in there. They have tool room in there, they have an office space in there, they have a micro mini break room, which is about the size of that office there, maybe smaller, half the size. They have a washroom in there. That's just a, you know, a sink and a toilet. Heating system has been updated.
John, I want to add a little bit, because I've been involved with the repairs over there. We first had to find out if that building was even worth repairing, it's a pole barn. Holes go right down into the ground. One of the first things that we had done was holes dug to see if the posts that are in the ground are still there, or are they all running? Good news, the posts are fine, the building is structurally sound. Over the years, we have replaced the roof, we've replaced the ceiling inside. I believe the doors are now all electrically operated, as opposed to manually pushing up. We had insulation put in, because as we talk about some of the interior of the walls, found out that the insulation would, had been there, it all fallen down. Electrical work was in deplorable shape. Replaced that, put in new, uh, insulation. But all of this was done with the idea of not keeping the highway department there forever, but to move down to the five-acre lot down here, okay? Yes, we repaired the building, yes, it's in good shape now, but it was always with the intent of moving down. Going along with that intent, I might add that the town has already spent a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars towards site work to move it down there, alright? So, I know, some people are going to say, well gee, the building's in good shape. Yes, it is in good shape. Move the fire department in, okay? Go ahead.
Okay. So, the new, the highway garage has four bays, adequate enough for the equipment. I showed you this picture here before the business was done, ten years ago. Hasn't changed. And some of the equipment looks the same that is there now. It has adequate, uh, storage space for their bunker gear, the fire department went over there and took a look at it. Be a little tight, I think, to get all your bunker gear in there, but it could be worked out. There's, there's proper rooms in there, once the highway department gets out of there, to put in your medical supplies, lock those off, additional supplies. There's proper insulation and protection for all the mechanical and the apparatus that's in the building. There's storage for EMS, there's extra storage over the offices, and this was, this is what a lot of garage, highway departments do. Sorry, you don't have page eight, right?
Right.
Okay, sorry. This is a picture of, uh, the break, this is the break room, this is a road agent's office, and this is a, what they call a mezzanine, so you can put storage up there. It's, right now, they, this picture doesn't have it, but they can put a compressor. So, as we get along here, we'll talk about this. The mezzanine would be above office space, break room could be additional storage for their equipment. Hoses, maybe, uh, the air packs, depending on where you're going or what you're doing, okay? So that could be, everybody at page nine, right? Now, it was, it was asked by the fire department, and this could be done in the future, could add a meeting room, but right now, I'm not sure that would be necessary, but it could be entertained. And a meeting room would be a, a smaller room to the right or to the left of the building for meetings. But right now, they have a meeting room, which is the old town hall. So, how would we modify, further modify the highway department to accommodate some expansion that the, the, uh, fire department would need? Bigger break room, bigger office space, a washroom with, with a, with a device, with devices that they call extractors. It's a very expensive washing machine. And we're not talking four hundred dollars, we're not talking a thousand dollars, we're talking anywhere between four and twelve thousand dollars. That would clean the bunker gear. Now, that's something you'd have to look at. You'd have to take into consideration, where does that water go? Does it go to the septic, does that go in a particular gray water thing, so forth and so on? Didn't get into that. But the highway department was, had, had a quote, a ballpark figure to expand, to push the back out. Right now, in the back of the building, there's a forty-foot trailer that they store materials in. Just a tractor, just a container, four, I think it's forty, uh, twenty by forty container. So they store whatever they store, and I don't know. So, um, the thought was that we could push out ten feet, go around the building, and come toward the bathrooms, add a shower and a decon center somewhere in that area where the bathroom is, because the plumbing is already there. Expand the office, give us a little bit of break room, uh, could even push the building, push the offices back, but that wouldn't be necessary. So, what would that cost? Thirty to fifty thousand at the most. We got a quote of thirty thousand, utilizing some of the materials that we had with the old town hall. So that would give them more room for activities, more room for storage, and pretty much cover that. Alright, page nine, where am I here? Page ten, um, you don't have page ten, right? That copier needs, they need to come in and... It was operator error, I think, because I had, I should have asked, and I was trying to do it. Okay, so, uh, that would take care of the fire department, and, um, making additions or changes over there, putting in a ventilation system. Fire suppression system depends on how it's used. Right now, if, um, the state says that fire, a fire suppression system is not necessary if that building was holding equipment in it, like just moving the equipment over. If the use changes where you add sleeping quarters or that kind of stuff, maybe so. I haven't determined that yet, but, uh, that will be determined, whether that is going to happen or not going to happen. So, the other thing about the highway garage, so, let's say the fire station, there's some other things we could possibly do there. But, modified relatively inexpensively, uh, over at the highway department, they have funds to do a lot of that, they have fifty-two thousand dollars in their capital reserve for their highway, I'm sorry, fire department. Town has put forth an inaugural to add another ten. That certainly could do those additions, and they could move in. They can't move in until the highway department moves out. So, the highway department, to give you an idea where they are, has about a million and a half dollars' worth of equipment inside and out, maybe more. The highway garage is utilized minimum forty hours a week, this time of year, more. All the time, that thing is open all the time. It's open, it may be, you may look at it in the afternoon, nobody's there, and I don't know if they left early today, but they probably did, because it's going to be snowing like heck this, tomorrow morning. So they do that, they'll cut out, and then they come back in. Most of the frontline equipment, the three large dump trucks and the front-end loader are in the four bays. So sitting outside is the back hole, the front-end loader, and the grader. And then peripheral equipment, sanding, wheels, and rigs and so forth and so on. The highway garage, as John has mentioned, has been brought up to code. So, that is it. Now, as far as what the highway garage, we're in ten eleven, okay? Going down here, the one thing that's over at the highway garage right now is a, and it's been there for years, and people know that it's there, we know it's there, is a potential environmental hazard, which is the salt shed out there. Very small salt shed, when we get salt delivered, and we've gotten a lot of salt this year because of the weather, the whole load of salt can't go in the shed, so it comes out, it stays out. So if it's rain, and we had rain this thing, yes, we have. So, the board, I've always, I'm not saying it's doing it right now, but it could be a potential hazard to our neighbors or down the street. It hasn't been thus far, but it could be. Also, all the sand mix that usually is used on the roads, in other words, they mix sand with, with salt to help keep our roads... In other words, they mix sand with salt to help keep our roads clear in the wintertime. When they mix that, it's left outside in a pile. So that can freeze, it can be crunky. If they mix it ahead of time, that's fine, but they got no place to put it, so they keep it outside. All their equipment is outside. It's a relatively small yard. Some of you may laugh at this, but from an aesthetic point of view, we have in the center of town a construction yard, basically. I wasn't here at the time, but when you did the, if I was, I was probably incognito. When you did the charrette, what is that, $2,000?
$2,002.
I was not here in 2000. Well, I was, but I wasn't. They had proposed, if you recall, a mega safety building, fire station, police building. You know what that price was? Do you remember? $4.8 million for two buildings. And what they were trying to do is keep the character of Middleton a little more rural in terms of what it is. Now we've redone the town hall, but we have a construction yard over here. Most towns have their town hall and their public safety building. That's a pride of the community. Not that the highway department is, but 90% of the highway departments are off in the woods someplace because it's a dirty business. Okay. So going down here, we are proposing up to a seven-bay facility, of which one bay would be offices. A seven-bay facility, and this facility would be an 80 but 140, and I'll get into that in a minute. But how did we determine what the building looks like? And you can look back here, and you can see a proposed design. Ed Brennan and myself, in December, went to three towns that built new highway garages in the last eight years. Two of them, one was Hopkinton, which its highway garage burned to the ground a few years ago. Same thing with Hennecker. Hennecker's burned to the ground. So what we did is we visited those buildings, we talked to highway garage people, we talked to town officials, to what did they go through, what type of building do they have? And most of those towns, Hopkinton and Hennecker, are bigger than we are. We also went to Sutton, which their building is about eight years old. So in the presentation by Hopkinton, why, you know, they were expanding their building, we would be expanding here by two bays. We would be allowed to get all our equipment under one roof. If you put equipment under a roof, the life expectancy will be enhanced by about three years. If you don't, they cited a study in 2012 that indicated that the life of a garage, the savings in vehicle maintenance and replacement cost can be as high as three times the construction cost. So in other words, if you leave it outside, your maintenance will go up three times than just adding it undercover. Highway garage, although it's adequate, it is a little cramped when they try to do maintenance in there, particularly in the wintertime. Plow maintenance, it's difficult to change blades, it's difficult to, I was out with them and they blew a hydraulic line. So you don't fix those outside, you gotta fix them inside. The vehicle bays on three of the bays are still very narrow. One of them is a little wider than the other one, but they've had to adjust their plows to get in there, and they got about that much room when they come in there. They haven't dinged them in yet, but I mean, it's kind of tight. The office space is small, it's very small. Rick's office is about the size of our kitchen here, a little bigger, not much. Small break room and no rest area.
What do you mean by rest area?
A place to rest, right now. I'm not saying necessarily sleep all night, but these guys go out at, I've seen them out, you have too, 10 o'clock at night. They don't go home, they go back there. They had told me that they, they might have to, because of the volume of snow to keep the roads clear, they might have to go out another two, three hours. They sleep in their trucks, get some shut eye in the trucks. So that, this building down here would provide a larger break room for them to get some rest other than sitting in their trucks. The storage capacity and the temporary trailer currently used, it's okay. New building down here would provide ample storage for all their equipment. Current vehicle washing of vehicles, particularly during this time of year, vehicles get, particularly the snow trucks, all the vehicles, really get cluttered up with snow and salt and debris and everything in there. You gotta wash those down. Lately, there's not a lot of time to back those out and clean them when it's 13 below zero, even 10 below zero. And unfortunately, over there, they wash them down with a power washer, but when you wash a vehicle down, I've been told by the places that we visited, that a three-quarter inch hose pressure is not gonna do it. You need volume with vehicles to wash the stuff up. So that could be modified for the fire department also, okay? We could get a bigger, and we could walk on that. But down here, we would have a wash bay, which would be a maintenance bay, it would be one of the six bays. You could come in there, all town vehicles, buses, fire equipment, everything else, could come inside, wash off and go out. A lot of fires that you've seen recently with equipment have to do with electrical fires in equipment because they are not cleaned off with salt and so forth and so on. Now, you can eliminate that, and we are doing that is by putting a kill switch for your electricals.
Just a quick question. You're saying you gotta have a wash bay, but on your, I'm looking ahead, page 19, it says...
You can't look ahead.
Well, I did, but it says delete wash bay and put in a...
Well, it's gonna be a bay, but it will be. Okay, it's a good question. Okay, you're jumping ahead, but that's okay, I'll take the question. The original wash bay had a separate wall between there with a catwalk and everything else, and that gets a little expensive, and it reduces your flexibility. So what you can do for a wash bay is you can get a big curtain, stock it in the back, and when you wanna wash something, you just pull it this way. You've got a ladder like they have in Home Depot, a bigger one, so you can roll it up, get on the top, and wash your things, whatever. So that's why that squiggled off there, we thought that was a little over the top. So you could do buses, we could do the buses, we could do the police cars, we could do all kinds of stuff. The spreader racks, you have page 12? No. You have no even number. Okay. Page 12. Spreader racks out there are what we store the spreaders on, they're on the back of the dump truck. We have four. Two of them are on these clumsy, crickety old four-by-four racks. If they put them on, they hold them on chain, and they're kind of going, they're not the safest thing in the world. The other two go on the ground, probably not the best place to stick them on the ground, but that's where they go. So the new facility down there would have a new spreader rack, probably hold all four, and a catwalk. It's a very inexpensive thing, it'd just be like a simple shed covered. It would still be in the open, it wouldn't be in any building, but it'd be open. It'd be safer to remove them and attach them whenever they had to. Okay. So page 13, we talked about the salt shed. Okay. Salt shed has been repaired, but it's in dilapidated condition. This salt shed doesn't look much different. Looks a little worse than it did. I have a picture, I have a photograph that we took back in 2008. Looks better then than it does now. Now it's kind of, we tried to fix the roof, but there's a lot of pressure there. So the facility down there would include a salt shed, type of scenario, one or two, depending. Highway department would like to have a capacity of 300 cubic yards of salt, and they'd like to have salt in one and sand mix in the other. But depending on how you do the shed, you can have, for example, Hopkinton had just a wooden shed. They had a four-foot concrete wall like this, big enough, concrete wall in the middle, and just wood up inside and a shed roof. Salt over here, and sand over here, and we keep it out of the weather. So, you know, the salt shed is flexible in terms of what we're gonna do. The current salt shed holds 90 cubic yards of salt. We get, when we get delivered, I think we get 35 cubic yards of salt that comes. So we've had two or three trucks come in there in a week. And we use it, but, okay. So on page 14, which you don't have, I also mentioned in here, again, we talked about this before, is the aesthetic value of four corners, the charrette, would like to have. It's a minor thing, it's not that big a thing. The facility down here, right now, we have no space for school buses. Buses are all over the place, right? They have no place. They park over here, I don't know how long it's gonna last, or they park at the homes. But there could, there's plenty of space down there to provide for our school buses. The school could provide hookups for warm-ups and so forth, so there's plenty of room down there to do that. Fuel station, that could be an expense to move down here, which it could be. This station over here right now is fine. We need to add a pad, I think, to it, and maybe do some improvements on there, but that's not essential to move down there. It would be nice to move it down there, but that's not essential. 14, okay. Okay. So page 15 says, move the fire department to the highway garage, it provides a safer and more efficient facility, provides four bays, would include a kitchen area, just break area. Kitchen area right now is, for them, is microwaves and so forth and so on. Same thing with the fire department, enlarge the break area. You might put a, they have in there refrigerators, you might wanna put a stove in there, you could, it wouldn't be that much of a big deal. Would include a kitchen area, more storage and equipment, including bunker gear. Move the fire department to the highway garage, and they'd have more space. Okay? 15, 16. Down here, larger office space for administrative pass, electrical and sewer water already in place over here. Down here, we have to put a well in, we have to put a cistern in. We'd have to enlarge the cistern because we have a fire suppression system, which has to have a cistern. We have to have a pump, the pump in case of a fire, and we would enlarge in the cistern down here to allow for washing of trucks, because we go through 15, if you wash the entire fleet after an incident, they use about 1,500 gallons of water. So if we require a cistern of 23,000 gallons, we'd probably wanna go to 30,000 gallons to draw from that. Okay. The new facility also would be a more efficient, safer place for maintenance and repair. Spreader racks would be safer, allows for an upgrade later for a fuel station if we wanted to. All our materials and sand would be removed from here, could be easily stored over there. The salt, environmental potential issue over here would be moved over here. The site has been prepared to accommodate runoff. We have catch basins, we have a catch pond, so taking care of runoff has been minimized with the site plan that has been done. The site work is done, ready for a facility.
Who did the site work?
I believe Nelson. Nelson, okay.
To and of?
$135,000. $135,000. The only thing that would be necessary with a new facility down there, there might be some additional drainage need to put in, but it would be minimal. We do have to put a septic system down here, so that's kind of in our price. The new facility would meet our needs for many, many, many years. It would be a metal structure, metal frame structure, insulated top to bottom, a shed roof. Why a shed roof? So all the water and the snow, when it melts, goes away from the garage front door. Not a roof like this where you have, well, the highway department has them in front here, but if you have a long building, your roof goes like this, you have garage doors, snow can get in the way, becomes a maintenance issue, including the snow. The facility would, with all those bays and equipment, would meet our needs in the future, and my view of Middleton in terms of growth is gonna be slow over the years. We've had a lot of people come in, we've had some new buildings go up. Yeah, we still have land that could be developed, that was trying to be developed, but I, we have about 22 miles of road that we have to take care of. I think 13, maybe 13 miles of it is paved, the other is dirt. I don't see, the highway department doesn't see an increase in that down the road at all. Not really. The town growth, we're about 1,800, roughly, it's been that way for a while. You know, there's some properties here that could put in and develop, there was one on Silver Street that went out, but understandably, I think the fire, the highway department and the fire department have sufficient equipment to handle that, but moving down here into this building and moving over to this better building for the fire department would take care of all our infrastructure issues for some time. All the materials used down here would be up to current codes, be energy efficient, LED lighting, insulation, things like that. Now, page eight, you don't have page 18, right? Okay. Page 18 is the site plan down there and what we did with it. It's a lot of blah, blah, blah stuff, but it's where the building would go, where the salt shed would go, where the storage would go. To give you a little idea of where we are, this is Ridge Road, okay? Cell tower is right there. Yeah, right? No, cell tower's right here. Because here's Ridge Road, just like this. So the cell tower would be right here. Okay?
Should be top right corner.
I'm gonna make copy of it.
No, we're out of copy. I will make available, I'm sorry, just in that mode, I'm sorry. I will make available, I will correctly copy that, and if anybody wants that, it will be available here, I'll recopy it.
Teacher, double sign, or will you?
Question?
Yes.
This layout is, are we maximizing, I mean, are we using all the space that's on that? I'm looking at this picture, we are using every piece, we have no room to move. I mean, and I'm not saying we're looking to make it any bigger, but we are at capacity with this five acres.
If you look at the back of the building, and go straight back towards the parking line?
Is that this parking line right there?
Yeah. A lot of that will be still undeveloped area.
But it is...
So there's potential for like extra sand piles or something like that, whatever. But the five acres is all we have down there, totally.
Is it maximized? It's used to its fullest efficiencies.
Right, but I'm just saying, with this setup the way it is here, we have no more...
No, for expansion.
And I don't want, I want the expansion chance, but...
Is the school bus shed or whatever on that diagram?
No, but there is room to put them someplace. Okay? So as far as the, as far as the site is concerned, it was designed to, first of all, accommodate the runoff, it's on a slight slope this way. There's gonna be a lot of non-horse paving and so forth, will take a lot of runoff. So a lot of work had to be done to make sure that the runoff went the right place and the right way, catch basins, so forth and so on. When you wash vehicles in the summer outside, you know, there's going to be materials, oils and gasoline and so forth that will get in the ground somehow, but they were washed down in the catch basins, and the site was designed to accommodate that. So it's pretty well filled up. There's, I don't think we could put another building in there. We've got a good chunk on the front of it, which is a catch basin. We have down the street, I don't know how far... And we have down the street, I don't know how far it is, then we have Jones Brook. You have to be careful. So, nineteen, does everybody have nineteen?
Yes.
Okay. This is, this is, this is a proposal that we're looking at. It's not cast in stone. Uh, we did, based on this setup and based on the criteria that we gave a contractor, to give us a ballpark figure on what this would cost. Uh, this is a, one, two, three, four, five, six bay. And you can see I squiggled off there, the, the separate wash bay, that would be just another bay. The offices are actually right here. And the offices would include a road agent office, an engineering office, a wash room, a utility room and a break area. And, um, what else do we have in there? Uh, I guess we have a shower in there someplace, okay? So, this is eleven thousand two hundred square feet. It's a building eighty by forty. I'm sorry, eighty by forty. Eighty by one forty, completely insulated. Heated floors. All the buildings that we saw, and everybody that we've talked to about heated floors in a building such as this, even a fire station for that matter, heated floors are the most efficient way to go to maintain your equipment. All the, the buildings that we visited, the three highway garages that we visited, all had heated floors. They had a backup modine heater in the corner in case, when you open the garage doors, a lot of heat goes out. But the heated floors, that's where you're doing most of your work. When you have to work on the vehicles, is within ten feet or down. And that's where the heat goes. Doesn't go up much, yes, it does rise, but the heat stays right around ten feet above the floor. Two and a
Good.
Yep.
I'm interested in hearing from a couple of you folks. I can think of Joe Bailey, who does heating. I can think of Jim Nat, who does electrical. I can think of Ken Gary, who just helped put up the school. Any thoughts about heated floors, from any of the three of you?
Don't have a drill into them.
What's that?
Don't have a drill into them.
Are you seeing more and more heated floors?
I am, but the issue is, if you do it in a garage, a year later, you wanna put a lift in.
Better not hit those lines.
Then I hit those pipes, okay?
If you pre-plan, if you pre-plan
Beautiful.
For a, that's exactly what Hopkinton did. You build the floor structurally sound to hold a lift, sixty thousand pounds per, whatever it is. And you lay that out, and you lay, a lot of lifts now don't have to go in down.
Right.
They can sit on top of the floor, if the floor is built the first time correctly.
Ken? We just got out of school, any thought when you're moving in?
I wanna clarify first of all, I didn't help out with the school. I, I'm very familiar with the drawings and plans, and that's what I do for work, I work for an engineering firm. That project was solely by the construction manager, the architect. But as far as the heated floors goes, absolutely. It's much more efficient, you run your water temperature much lower, so you're actually using a condensing type boiler. It all around, it's efficient, and a lot of times, you don't necessarily need that modine heater because you'll find when you open up the garage door, unless you're doing it for extended period of time, right when you close it, that space heats up pretty quick because it's on a massive wall.
Yeah, now, just, thank you, Ken. Just as a side note, Hopkinton, um, their original garage fortunately faced the south. So, when they built theirs, their garage stores are almost all windows. So, we were in there in December and it was toasty in there, just because of the heat coming in.
So, where are you? Anything you wanna say about heated floors?
Well, to pair a little bit with Ken's stuff like that, yes. When you can heat your floors and heat your building at a hundred and twenty-five degree water versus a hundred and eighty degree, this is your base board and stuff like that, it's much, much, much cheaper to, to, cost efficient to do it, so.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Right. The new, the new building as, as the highway garage slash new fire department, we'd have a ventilation system in it. Both, all three had ventilation systems, as I described earlier, with sensors on them that they kick in and they can draw a lot of air out quickly. Fire suppression, because it's a new building, is to code. So, fire suppression would be there, which requires a cistern, which requires a pump, which we don't have three phase down there. So, we have to get a generator that is three-phase capable plus, run the rest of the building if we have a failure. That's workable. Salt shed down there, backup generator. In our particular budgetary number, we, it was advised of a hundred and twenty KW generator. I don't know, that's too big, not too small, but, uh, that was what was recommended. The reason we don't have three phase down there, what it's gonna cost us, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have every source come from here down there for three phase, and the cell tower does not need three phase, and we're not gonna have three phase. All materials would be up to code. Okay. So, what does this cost? I am not a banker, I'm not a financial whiz. This gentleman over here is a financial whiz. But if you talk to financial institutions, if you go online, you can get a good idea of what loans cost and I did some number crunching here in terms of tax rates and impacts to your house.
Short discussion, difference between a bond and a loan?
I don't know.
Is there something about payback?
There are, there are, there are two types of loans that I've been able to figure out. I don't, I don't know what the difference between a note and a bond is. A bond may be
A bond and a loan?
A, a bond, I'm gonna say a bond is, um, there's usually no prepayment on a bond, a note, what's that?
Usually you can't
Usually you can't prepay a bond. Why can't you, okay, that's right. A bond is, when an institution, uh, issues a bond, like the bond, the New Hampshire Bond Bank, they write the bond, loan you the money, and then they sell that bond to investors who want a fixed rate over a period of time. And if you prepay it, they've lost their interest in their growth on that bond. A note would be just like a loan, like a car loan. A mortgage, okay? There's two ways to figure a note or bond numbers. One is a, a level principal and a level debt. Uh, I'd have to look on my note what that is. But what I figured here was, we would want the, uh, you get a, you, you, you get a lower rate, um, in the end, in other words, your rate starts up here high on your first year and it diminishes each year as you go through the length of the loan, whether it's ten years, twenty years, thirty years. A lot of us have, most of us have mortgages, it's flat, same payment fluctuate because of taxes, but the note, the principal is the same, okay? So, uh, my numbers were based on, um, a diminishing tax rate, beginning with the highest number at the top and going down to the low. The other thing that, um, you may wanna consider, but it's not, I guess most people don't look at it. I think most people look at, what's my mortgage payment gonna be? They don't look at the interest. There's a difference, uh, if you have a level payment, same payment all the time, uh, you pay a little more interest that way. The other thing that takes into consideration is, where do you get the rates and who gives the rates? Uh, I went to, uh, two commercial banks. TD Bank, and our current bank is Profile Bank in Rochester, or wherever their headquarters is, wherever they are. TD Bank has a commercial loan division, and they typically loan at ten years. Their rates right now are three and a half percent. Profile Bank couldn't touch us for less than five. Bond bank, now, interest rates, these numbers that you see in the back are really numbers that are based on a rate today. They could go up, they could go down, they're not negotiated because we don't have a firm number to negotiate. So, I'll tell you how I figured the numbers and what we did there, just to give you an idea of, of the rates. The lowest rates that I've found is the New Hampshire Bond Bank. The only problem, only problem, it's not a big one when you look at the scheme of the things when you're, when you're loaned or when you take a bond out. They do have some expenses, it can be as high as seventy-five hundred dollars for the note, for the bond. In the scheme of a million, a million and two bond, minimal. Their rates, they just sold some bonds here in the beginning and middle of January for about two point two percent. My numbers that I have in here are figured at three and a half, these are very conservative numbers, three and a half and at two and a half. And the note, the size of the note, the size of the building, the, the estimated cost of this facility down here came in at about one point seven million. That's with all the stuff in it. So, what the board looked at is said, okay, what, how do we, what do we do with that? So, the board, we have a, we have a, we have an article in there, uh, raise not to exceed, uh, one point seven million, we have to do that. Of which, a certain amount comes from fund balance. Right now, it's written at four hundred thousand? I believe that that will be raised to maybe five hundred thousand. And how much do we have in the fund balance?
Shy of a million?
Shy of a million.
So, that leaves the town a good spot financially, that, going forward, something
Yeah, there's a certain, the fund balances is, uh, uh, monies and credits for, uh, monies that haven't been spent, but taxes have been raised, to put it simply that way. So, uh, my numbers here also include, if you remember, uh, the town approved that all revenue from the cell tower would go toward the highway garage. All revenues, yes.
So, when is the cell tower gonna get put up?
Uh, that's for another discussion, I can't tell you right now.
But you can't figure it into here, you don't know about it?
I can give, I'm trying to give you an estimate. There is a meeting on the cell tower in terms of the variance, which I'm sure will, which is actually tomorrow. Once that is, uh, passed through the ZBA, then it's full steam ahead for, uh, putting up the tower. So, the tower, uh, will generate roughly each year uh, about anywhere from fourteen to sixteen thousand dollars a year, depending on how far you go out. Their contract says for ten years. So, what I did is amateurize that out as a compound income, fourteen thousand dollars plus two percent. You get two percent every year added to that. So, what I did on, on the thing here was, or on this, uh, amortization table, is I showed you your costs per thousand. What it would cost each house at a hundred and fifty thousand assessed value, two fifty and three hundred. And then the next column I showed you what, what the cell tower effect would be on that.
What page, John?
Uh, well, they're, they're back there.
First green and yellow?
Yeah, the green and yellow.
First one, right?
Yeah, the first one says one point two total cost, one point seven, less five hundred thousand. Everybody had that one?
Page, yeah. The ten year for three and a half?
Ten years of three and a half, okay, so. Now, where did I get these tables from? Variety of sources, um, whether these are totally correct or not, I can't tell you, but I think they're pretty close. And again, this is very conservative. So, what we were saying is we'd have a one point seven million dollar appropriation, of which five hundred thousand would be used from fund balance, bringing down to the bond of one point two. Okay? So, in the first year and ten years, your tax rate would be eighty-eight cents a thousand. And the tenth year would be sixty-eight cents a thousand. What would that, what would that do to your, your, your tax impact to your house? On the first year, if you owned a hundred, if you had a hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed value, it'd be a hundred and thirty-two dollars a year. At the tenth year, it'd be a hundred and one dollar a year. If you owned a three hundred thousand dollar home, it'd be two sixty-five versus on the last ten years, two hundred and three. The next group would be the property tax impact applied to cell tower revenue. Drops about thirteen, fourteen percent. So, your tax rate goes down from eighty-eight cents to eighty cents. So, your first year on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would be about a hundred and twenty bucks a year. Uh, on a three hundred thousand dollar, it'd be two forty-one, and you get down to, uh, the tenth year, it goes to eighty-seven to one seventy-four. Okay, now, there's another one out there that says for twenty years. Should be. Okay? The tax rate for a twenty-year bond, first year, fifty cents a thousand. That would be seventy-five, seventy-six bucks a year for a home of a hundred and fifty thousand. This is the first, and they diminish each year for twenty years. A three hundred thousand dollar home would cost a hundred and fifty-one bucks. With the cell tower revenue added to that, or it's taken away from that cost, your, your tax drops down about forty-two cents a thousand. So, the impact to a person that has a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home with the cell tower revenue, that is only the annual lease, has nothing to do with any additions of revenue for additional carriers on there, couldn't figure that out. Why put that in there if we don't know? When that extra revenue, if there's another carrier that goes up there, Horizon or Sprint or whoever, we get forty percent, is that right, Roger? Forty percent of that revenue, whatever that is, we have no idea what it is. So, I didn't put it in there. So, taking the cell revenue, this is a twenty-year note at three and a half. I'm pretty confident that we can get better than three and a half from the bond bank, because the bond bank just let out, uh, a thirty-year note at three and a half, a three point zero five. And a ten-year note, I think, was two point five. So, that's a big difference. So, your rate drops down to forty-two cents a thousand. Impact on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would be sixty-three, sixty-four bucks. A three hundred thousand dollar home, a hundred and twenty-seven bucks. At the end of the year, at the end of twenty years, you're down to thirty-five bucks a year and seventy bucks a year. Total cost to taxpayer on a twenty-year note would be nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighteen cents. And a three hundred thousand dollar home, that's over twenty years, pay for this facility down here. I put in here also, I don't know, I hope this copied this, I think it did. I have in here, uh, rates on two and a half. And, um, for ten years and two and a half for, um, those numbers, those numbers don't look right there. Yeah, I'm talking about, okay.
There's one in there for the half, for the half.
Okay. So, those are the numbers, uh, that's what we're trying to do. How did we get to one point seven? We, we had a contractor that was willing to take a look at our, uh, criteria for the building, which we gave him. Metal building, heated floors, fire suppression, six bays, offices, blah, 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 blah. He came back with a number of about one point seven million.
Okay?
So, that's just for the main building, that doesn't include the salt shed, the sand shed?
Does not include the salt shed, but includes, uh, we feel that the bid, there's enough room in there to put the salt sheds in that number. So, we didn't have a number, he didn't have a number on the salt shed, because he didn't have it designed, so the salt sheds are not in that number, but we feel we can find salt sheds and build salt sheds within that number. Does not include a, 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 um, a, um, fuel station, because
Okay, so it doesn't include, so it only includes the building, so it doesn't include the salt shed or the sand, salt, sand shed, more the spreader?
No, that, we can get the spreader in there.
This, this
Spreader racks.
Spreader racks, those go in, they'll, they'll be in the building.
One thing people gotta understand, this is where it's casing area, at this point, in one point seven. This hasn't gone out with bid and stuff like that, so, you're gonna find it, I don't think it's one point seven, I think you're gonna find it should be a lower price than that. So, if we have one point seven million, and the bids come in lower than that, then you'll have your money for your salt shed. So if we have one-point-seven million and the bids come in lower than that, then you'll have your money for your salt shed.
John?
You talked about the poles for the highway barn have been checked out.
Yes.
Oh, obviously there was some question that they might have deteriorated. And what, considering the condition that you found, what's the prognosis going forward for those? What's, what's the life expectancy that?
When the engineers dug down on the pole, by and of course, the highway garage, they didn't know, they didn't, I don't know how deep they went, but they found absolutely no issues with those poles whatsoever.
Anybody have any idea how old that pole barn is?
It's quite old.
Very old.
And that's not, that's the beauty of it.
Not deteriorated yet.
It's gonna be at least forty years old. I mean, that would issue structurally, because we would not have put the money into it had there been any problems.
I realize, I'm just looking at, you know, are we looking at ten more years, twenty more years, forty?
Speaking of that, quick timeout. Early in your presentation, you talked about the fire station being built. Raise your hand if you were here when the fire station was built.
Two, three people?
You were part of building it. Tom the owner was part of actually building it.
Oh, yes, we did it for zero.
Uh, Roxanne?
Zero.
So.
John was here when the, created the town.
Just about.
So I guess my question is, is so we're looking to raise the one-point-seven million for primarily the highway, the new highway building. This isn't even taken into consideration moving the, uh, I'm sorry.
Fire department.
Fire department, everything else, what that's gonna entail and how much that's gonna cost? Because that's the next thing I see, thing, see coming down.
We talked about that, and what we said is the improvements that, that would satisfy the requirements, most of the requirements that the fire department's looking for, a separate bunker gear room, uh, isolation of their equipment, uh, expanding the, um, uh, office space, a little bit of break area. We feel there's sufficient funds in the capital reserve, fire department capital reserve, to accomplish that over there.
And if there is not?
Then they have to cut that one down.
If there's not, there's always gonna be, Roxanne, if there is not. It's a good question, but if there what ifs.
There's the what ifs.
Well, if you, if you do a what-if budget.
We don't want to do a what-if.
I know that, so, so, um, I, I think we feel that that could be done. There may have to be a second stage down the road if, if we have to add something. Uh, remember, this isn't one-point-seven we're talking about. That's what the building facility is gonna cost. We're talking about a bond of one-point-two million dollars, not a one-point-seven.
That's what the bond is, but ultimately to the taxpayer, it's one-point-seven because that is money that has been raised through taxation that people have already paid the five-hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's it.
So I just, I mean, that's all.
That's fine.
John?
Just a point of curiosity, you talked about putting a mezzanine in the highway. What would the height of that area be? Do you have a?
So there's mezzanine already there, so you don't, you, the mezzanines aren't typically.
Is it, is it headroom, stand-up room, or is it shorter than that?
It's shorter, yeah.
Over the, oh, highway garage? It's pretty much almost depends on how tall you wash, stand-up.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not, um, in the, in the highway facility, what, I'm sorry.
Ken would probably bang his head, Janet wouldn't.
No, it's, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be any higher, but you can still get up there and get it.
Janet?
The money in the fire department addition fund, capital reserve fund. We need to go back and check how that was written, because if it was written for an addition, can't use it to build, to, to, to set off a room or something. Can only be used for an addition to the building.
That would be an addition on the back.
Right. If that's how you're gonna do it, you're fine. But if you're using it to, to correct something inside, you know, you're.
You may get to that point first, or if we hit the rip with that.
Right.
Uh, a short, oh, Ken?
Couple of questions, um, this part, it sounded like you were giving numbers for a bond because you're indicating a decrease in payment. Anticipated, what you would give for a cost schedule for payment, is that right?
What's that?
You were given bond numbers, I think?
Yes.
You had a de, a flat rate bond?
Yes, I was given some amortization tables.
So if by chance that if you hit the bond market right, and the bond market paid a premium, what, what would you anticipate the board doing with that premium? Would you reduce the principal, or would you add that to expenses on the project?
I would reduce the principal, I guess.
Absolutely, yes.
Um, the other thing is that overall, we're talking about expanding the footprint. You've mentioned, I think, eleven thousand square feet. Uh, what are the, what are the anticipated operational costs to heat it and electrify it? Because overall, we're talking, you know, I'm hearing, or I heard initially, is that the fire department's cramped in, highway department's cramped in, so we have additional square footers. So what are the operational costs? Because I do think about the fourteen thousand you mentioned, pretty much wiping that right out.
Fourteen thousand for.
For operational costs, heating and electrifying the building.
Could, uh, didn't entertain that in terms of operational cost. Um, it is, it would be a larger facility, however, uh, far more efficient. I didn't look into the operational aspect changes of that. You could be right that that could eat that up, but.
And I guess if the, if the bond or the financing is approved by the taxpayers, um, how's the project gonna be administered? Are you talking about hiring a general contractor, a construction manager? Um, who's gonna design and how is it gonna be competitively bid?
Uh, I've talked to two different companies and, um, in both instances, they manage the project. GC is the one that manages the project. One rec, did not recommend using an architect. Recommended using their expertise and their, their, um, people that they work with to design and manage the building. Each contractor that, uh, the two that I talked to has a fee that's included in the quote, to manage the project. They can be eighty to a hundred thousand dollars on a project this size to manage that project. That would include a design build, design drawings, working with the contractors, picking the contractors, working with the, um, design criteria that the town is looking to find the most, uh, use of the money. So, uh, we would be using a GC, I would recommend using a GC, uh, to manage the project. I would not, on a project this side, I would not have the town involved per se. Would have a professional GC, general contractor do the work, just like you guys did down here, kind of. You had an architect and you had a GC.
No, we, we had, we had an architect and engineer, architect with sub consultants to provide engineering, civil services.
Yeah.
Um, the, the other piece is what we did is that, uh, conventionally, most people on larger projects like that, you go with a construction manager, which is different from a general contractor.
Yeah.
Construction manager we brought in early, uh, during design development because we knew we had to run a tight, tight budget. And we got it down to about a hundred-and-sixty-two dollars a square foot for the school, which is pretty much unheard of this day and age for a brick building. Um, but that construction manager's the one that worked with the subcontractors and got a team on board that is familiar with working with that team and different vendors. They put it all up to bid competitively amongst a whole host of electricians they worked with. But, um, it certainly was a closed group to make sure that they had people they know the work with to get the job done. So that was construction management. Um, so if there's not gonna be an architect or engineer, um, you're going pretty much for a performance-type building. So that brings up my next question as far as design build, because, um, I, I'm not gonna stand here and say that I'm an expert at a total design build of a, of a project. But my concern is that who is going to prescribe or define what that design build criteria is? And I say that because what I've heard is that you have, um, contractors have, have recommendations for who to do the design build. So it can run away, and I'm just not, you know, speaking ill of any one of you. You all have your own professions, you all have your own, you know, interests and stuff and what you do and your, your knowledge ability and what you're an expert in. But you're not an expert in what we're talking about. Nor am I gonna say that I am either. So that's the only thing that concerns me is that, you know, how does, who actually establishes the criteria and who holds the bar to ensure that stays there? And the other thing is, what kind of contingency is being carried in that one-point-seven million? Do you have a contingency? Is that incorporated in one-point-seven, or is that an addition too?
That is, there is a, there is a contingency in there. The, the one contractor that, that did quotas, uh, did talk about his construction management portion of his particular situation, whether it's an outside entity or not, uh, we have not entertained that. We needed, uh, and I, I talked to, the one contractor was Richie out of Portsmouth, and the other one was, uh, Gruen out of Rochester. In both cases, uh, Gruen hasn't seen this at all, just was a general statement, that, uh, they would take into the concerns that you expressed about an overrun and who's gonna decide what equipment and so forth, and should it be this way? Do, do we need this fancy fixture over here? Do we do, so that you don't overbuild on your budget? So did we go to a construction management firm? Did we go to an engineering firm? No, we have not. We're relying on a crite, a criteria that we developed based on our visits, based on the needs of the highway facility to move out so the fire department can move in. Roxanne?
Time frame.
Well, timeframe is, uh, most projects that we saw took about a year. So let's say the town approves this, okay? We would have to, uh, both Hawkinson and, um, Henneker, took about nine months for the project to get completed, including, uh, bids, financing, all that kind of stuff, and construction. So in this case here, December, could go out further than that, depending on weather, depending on, uh, bond market, depending on, uh, whatever happens. I can say this, that, um, construction costs are, are not going down, they're going up. And they're not going up because of material costs, they're going up because of labor costs. That's the big drive from what we've been told. So, um, it's subcontractors and so forth.
Let's kick out some questions. So if this project wasn't to happen this year, it was presented again, what's the cost per year, every year we do it?
I, I saw a cost, he just talked about his cost of a hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars a square foot.
Hundred-and-sixty-two for the.
Hundred-and-sixty-two a square foot. I was told by, uh, Fenton Gruen, who's president of Gruen, that right now it's about one-ninety a square foot. So in the near future, uh, it's not going down. Interest rates are a fickle thing right now, because they can go like this. We don't know, they've been, historically, they've been low. They've been low. But, uh, the construction, construction costs have, and Ken can probably allude to this, are, are growing all the time. And again, it's, uh, both, both the contractors that I talked to, the one that actually gave us a number, said it's not the materials cost, it's trying to get contractors to work. There's a, there's a lack, they have so much work, there's not enough people to do it, so the price goes up.
John? A short history. This thing's. This thing started at least in two thousand and two, when the charrette was, uh, designed for the whole Middleton Four Corners. I think you mentioned something about either two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. Uh, I remember as recently as two thousand and thirteen, when it was suggested by me that the money for the new highway garage trust fund be changed prior to two-thirds vote, to allow repairs at the existing highway garage. And that year, two thousand and thirteen, the voters very definitely did not want the money changed. They wanted the money set aside for a new highway garage. But what was the price in, was it two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight? Wasn't it well under a million?
It was five hundred thousand, wasn't it?
The first one was, uh, the article, I think it was two thousand and seven, the article came in at nine-hundred-and-fifty. It was reduced to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand on a bond, and that was readily defeated. It has to go, two-thirds vote has to, has to occur. The following year, the note came in at five-hundred thousand. At the time, this was two thousand and eight, and I'll, I'll give you how building costs have changed since then. Uh, that barely missed the two-thirds vote by seven votes. I have somewhere in my file packet here, uh, Derry constructed a eighteen-thousand-square-foot highway garage in two thousand and eight. Similar to what we're doing, or proposing, not doing, proposing, asking you to support. That building cost in two thousand and eight, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. This building here is only eleven thousand square foot and came in at one-point-seven. The building in Henneker and Hawkinson came in at one-point-two two years ago. And, and that, those buildings, and we, we're, we are proposing that we don't do this if we move forward. Two buildings had pellet heating systems, pellet furnaces, which cost them hundreds of thousand dollars more than propane facility. One just has, uh, I think it's oil, uh, but, um, so costs, um, are not going to go lower. What you have to do is, um, look at a smaller footprint. Cut here, try to eliminate this if you can, uh, change some criteria that you're looking for.
Chief, I'm, I'm bothering you, I'm sorry.
Um, three years ago, we built the school. Then it was the old town hall, and we've been redoing that. And we keep hearing, oh, this just got done, we don't need anymore. Oh, now we need more, we need more, and we need more. Now we got this going, then we're gonna have the, the fire station moved over. How, where do we, what's next? You know, like, we get this estimate, but is that gonna be done? Like the town hall, we keep getting asked for more and more and more. Is this gonna be it? Is there gonna be more? Like Roxanne said, we haven't got the shed, the salt shed included in this? We haven't got a couple other things in here?
I, I can say about the salt shed that we're pretty confident in that number, that the salt shed could be built within that budget, okay? As far as the highway garage being converted to the, um, uh, fire department, we believe there's sufficient revenue, uh, sufficient revenue sources currently to get most of that done without addition. No?
I don't think so.
Okay?
Go ahead.
So my next question would be to say, this is all out there and whatnot, and so has, had you possibly thought about doing like a, um, a phased approach? Saying we do this amount with, we have this excess in the fund balance, five-hundred thousand. This is what we can get done with it. Then with the fund balance, if we have left up to sign, say, make it, I, I don't know, it's just a different approach, just a thought.
To that end, we've done the site work, hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. So that's a piece that's already been done.
But we're going from a hundred-and-thirty-five to one-point-seven.
Yes.
It doesn't pass, it doesn't matter anyway. It's gonna be done whether it passes or whether it doesn't pass.
Right, yeah. Chief?
Sure.
Yeah, did you wanna comment, elaborate? Yeah, did you wanna comment, elaborate?
Well...
Lot of thoughts?
So, there's been a push since '06 or before about getting the new highway department. And that's been, that's been the main focus of everything. And I agree with that. I agree with the idea of getting them out of the center of town, getting them down on Ridge Road. Totally agree with that. I like the idea of being able to go over to the highway department, actually getting us four bays for four pieces of equipment. Completely agree with that. What I would like to see, or at least have some start, because we just started a discussion last week about it, is what can we do in a one, instead of piecemealing, you know, an addition this time? I don't believe that a 10 by 30 addition, yeah, it's gonna get us over there. But I think what's gonna end up happening is that we're just gonna go, okay, here's your addition. We'll revisit this in a couple of years, or at another timeframe. I would like to see at least some discussion, some traction on an addition to the fire sta, to the highway department slash fire station, that we'd be big enough to have our own meeting room, our own offices. Like we had discussed, one of the big things right now is that push for cancer. Having the red areas where the trucks are, and that's where all the bad stuff is. In the middle of that is your orange areas, which we have our decon, our bathrooms, the places where we can wash up. And then having a green area where our meeting, our meeting rooms could be. A kitchen area, someplace where we can meet, hold our own classes, instead of going over to the old town hall. Because if it's being used, or if we wanna start hosting our trainings, because we're getting more involved with other towns and mutual aid and things like that. So, I'd love to be able to put on some sort of an addition that it's, we're set for the next 15, 20 years. So, that's, 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 I know that everybody's focus has been the highway department and getting us over there. But I also like to see something for us, instead of just going, here's an addition.
So, my, so I just, my question is to address Bill's comments is, we have this money in the capital reserve fund for the high, for the fires, for the fire station building and whatnot. And you're saying that would be enough to cover that meeting room? But, no, no, just saying out, so, but that doesn't take into account the other stuff? Well, so if we either pay for the addition for the meeting room, what is, what is a meeting room to me? But the building still needs to have the bathroom facilities, a bunch of other stuff addressed. So, I don't think there's enough money in that capital reserve fund to handle everything that needs to be done?
And, and once again, I would just like to see, because we're gonna be, so we're going from a four-bay heated garage, I mean, three-bay heated garage, to a four-bay place. That's great, we've actually got breathing room and we've got space in between our vehicles.
Right.
And I'd love to just go, okay, boom, we're set for the next 20 years.
I guess maybe, maybe the approach, I think, maybe would have, or at least presented is to say, 1.7 million dollars. This is going to get us the new highway facility and it's gonna get us the high, the fire department that we need. Granted, I know the 1.7 is not coming, but what I hear coming is, we're gonna get the highway department. Then the next year, it's gonna be like, we need this money for the highway, the fire and stuff. I just see that kind of snowball to that. Maybe not, maybe it wouldn't, I don't know.
Hold on, you want to go?
I just, you opened saying that the reason we need this new facility, number one reason, was because the fire department needs to get out. Was there any discussion that that be a highway department slash fire department?
What is that, what is it? Down here?
Yeah, big enough for both. You said it was your number one reason, and then I honestly thought the public hearing was to get a new fire department, the way we were going.
Well, that has, that has been discussed by some as to attach the fire department down here. That would add, a new fire department down there would add substantial cost, okay? Versus what we're trying to do over here. So, what would you do with these buildings over here that you have?
I have no idea what you'd do with them, but I see the same thing. I see the money pit over there too, they're just moving to an old, older, you just said, older building. We're in the same situation. I would rather see the building be planned so that we collect the school, we can do an addition of the fire department in a few years. But I see us in the same boat.
So, what you'd have to think about is, you can't get over there until you go down here, right? So...
But they can stay where they are.
They can stay where they are.
My husband's been there. Yeah, all these people have been here for years.
Yes. Another thing that Chief was elaborating on, something Tracy was also just covering. If we're going over there, not only do we, like you were saying, we move over there, we do a phase here, a phase there, a phase here, a phase there. You brought up earlier in the meeting, our ventilation system. The thing with the fire department, the fire department falls under NFPA, National Fire Protection Agency, so on and so forth. We have laws that we have to go by. It's not just, oh, here's your ventilation system, we'll get you a washer next year, or vice versa. This is all, where we're at right now in the fire station, a lot of it is grandfathered in right now, because we've been there for so long. If you go and look into the NFPA right now, to date, everything we're doing in that fire station is illegal. And against the law. You can go on, you can go on the website, you can look it up, I'm not quoting anything right now. But like Tracy was just saying, we get over there, I mean, have you guys looked into how much it's gonna cost us to move over there? Have you looked into how much a ventilation system is? How much a washer and dryer is? If we have to put a sprinkle system in, I install fire sprinkles, they're not cheap. Sisterns, they're not cheap, because you need one for over here, if we had to put one in. Fire pumps, they're not cheap. You know, you guys had to put one in the school. Sisterns, they're not cheap.
So, so, just so I understand what you're saying is, if we move from the current building to the other building, that's considered going into a new building and it has to be brought up to code?
Right, per state fire marshal.
That's a big difference.
Well, can I just dovetail on that for one second?
Sure.
Is... I just got a call from the fire marshal's office today. They'd like to meet with us and come down to give us their opinions on what it would take. I think would be a good idea, get somebody to come down, give us, you know, their opinions on it. My question would be, is there a way, once again, totally believe that the highway department is, needs a new building. Is there a way that we can reduce the size of that building, one or two bays? Take that money that gets freed up, because the cost per tax, when you were talking about like $63, you know, per home, that's really nothing, it's really pretty low. Is there a way we could reduce the size of the highway department, still give them room to move in the future? Because you're talking two bays deep, 20-foot wide bays. Give them three bays or four bays wide, you know, because they got one bay for their meeting, you know, for their offices and that. Now, make it a little bit smaller, take up that money to be put into an addition over there. So, it's still a 1.7 or whatever, but now we're getting two buildings done at once.
Roger?
I had an idea. We've been fighting this thing for a long time, I think the best idea. Move the fire department down, I mean, our highway down here, take the police that's been on our cell phone over there, and put them over in the highway. No problem, leave you guys where you're at.
But I don't think the police doesn't want to, the police is going downstairs.
But why would we, because we wanna get out of that building, right?
I don't even wanna get out of it, but you're sitting there and you're fighting.
No, no, no.
I'm not, I need this, I need that.
No, 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 I'm not fighting.
We've been pushing for this stuff for how long, Bill?
A long time, Roger, I'm not...
I have a comment.
Keep talking to us, please, not each other.
Just that the warrant article, the way it was written, you couldn't actually do that. So, it would have to be like a new warrant, but just, I mean, just wanted to...
Just trying to think.
You know, we keep finding one, something that's... That's kind of my point, that, you know, we're gonna keep putting in more, and more, and more, and... But aside from that, what is going to happen to the current fire station? What are the plans for that, Annie?
Lots of ideas? Definitely, but so many other low pieces to take care of, like move the highway, move the fire.
I was just wondering if that's gonna be another expense that, you know, fixing that up for something else, or what?
There's been talk, perhaps something in the rec department, something perhaps with the police department, although they're happy where they are. Possibly cold storage, which is a building could be used just as is, okay? No, we've not gone that far, we're taking the first steps, maybe. Someone else? Ken?
How many kind of vehicles are required to be kept in a heated garage?
None.
Why, why so many bays?
You would get, the theory is that if your equipment is undercover, extends the life of the equipment. And if...
Heated? My question was heated.
Yeah, it's heated, that's correct.
We don't, we don't pull barns.
Yeah, I don't have a pull barn, yeah, you can stick them in a shed if you want to. But a heated facility does, from what I've read, does extend the life and protect the equipment. So, all the, right now, in the highway garage, right now, as we speak, are three dump trucks and a big front-end loader. Those are the most expensive pieces we have. We have a backhoe, we have a little front-end loader, and we have a road grader. Those are, those are not new. We also have a smaller tri-star dump truck, which is, I don't know, it's a smaller vehicle, it's not a, a ten, it's a ten. It's only a six-wheeler. That sits outside all the time. That vehicle is helpful in smaller, tighter roads if you go through, but it's sitting outside. So, having a building undercover and heated would just assist in keeping them longer. Give you the ability to clean them in the wintertime. It helps prevent maintenance issues.
All right. Mary?
Mary Knapp. I really appreciate your name, is what, bringing up the fact that having the fire department move over there won't be up to code, and how much more money is that gonna cost? Has that been considered previously to tonight, or is it new information to you guys?
Well, as far as code and up to code, certainly is important that we meet with the fire marshal representative, which is gonna come up here, as you said, right? I've also talked to the fire marshal office, I've also talked to our, our insurance agent, our insurance carrier. There are National Fire Association regulations, recommendations, so forth and so on. I certainly understand that. My preliminary discussions with the fire marshal was based on what we believe is gonna happen over there. That, for example, a fire suppression system wasn't necessary. Ventilation system is certainly desirable and probably warranted. It all depends on what type of fire suppression system we have. I don't know what the NFA requires, whether it's an attachment or an unattached system is sufficient. The attachment system, or the hose hanging down, going over the exhaust and so forth and so on. Don't know that. Ventilation system, I do know what, down here, the fire suppression for that building down there was about 115,000.
I still, sorry, but I still see more money coming to get that fire, the new fire facility.
Yeah, well, maybe we have to do a little more investigation. Maybe we'll find out when we meet with the fire marshal, what he says. Because I was led to believe by the fire marshal initially, that, they didn't talk about ventilation. We talked about, my question was fire suppression, and that wasn't necessary.
Will that be available somewhere for people to know before voting?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think we still have a little more work to do, obviously.
So, what you're saying is that the information on page 23 was calculated prior to, you know, thinking and taking into consideration fire marshal's code?
Yes.
All right. Mark, Roger?
Has there been any consideration of the fire department moving down there? And then giving the fire station, the old fire station, to the highway department? So, they have both buildings and a new room.
So, you're gonna move a four-bay facility into a three-bay facility with no bathrooms, no...
No, you're saying an addition?
The two buildings, the highway department now and the old fire station, and then set the fire station down there.
She doesn't want the highway, highway department and the fire department in the same room?
No, utilize the highway department as it is, but take the fire department as you are, give that to the highway guy. Instead of you guys being there.
No, we could construct it and make it smaller.
John?
Would it be possible to go ahead with the plans that you have? As Bill said, make the footprint of the new highway department a bit smaller. You've got extra bays, you've got things that need to be stored seasonally. Could those be stored in the fire department building we currently have?
Could be, yes.
And you'd have a smaller footprint for the highway barn?
Small footprint is certainly possible.
Jenna?
I think we have to keep in mind that we've already spent 130,000, and this is, that money has been accumulating in capital reserve now for 15 years, okay? Plus or minus, don't quote me on the time. But that money's already been invested in the site plan, there's been a lot of effort by a lot of people, you know, to develop that plan. I know, John, from all the equipment that we have, that vehicles last longer in a garage, okay? Not when they're sitting outside. The thing that really pulls at me is that I know at 10 o'clock at night, you know, when I'm getting ready to go to bed, or 11 o'clock, and they're out, I know 4 o'clock in the morning, you know, Rob Page is pulling over, and he's sleeping for a couple of hours in a truck. So is Pete Massey, so is Rick Washburn, you know, so is Paul Baron. And the idea is I'm sleeping someplace besides a truck, okay? And we all know what it's like to sit in our own vehicles, you know, you know, with it turned off, okay? It's not too comfortable after you slept for a half an hour, then you wake up, it's like, okay, I'll turn the car back on, you know? I just don't think it's a safe thing for them, but I also don't think it speaks well of the town, you know, and the care of our employees. So, and I understand, John, also about the heated floors, ventilation, you know, with the heating system rather. Because working on a truck on a heated floor is much easier than if you're lying on cold cement.
Roxanne, I think?
Yeah, my comment is, nobody is questioning, you know, the employees or anything like that. And that's not why we're not looking, you know, the concern is the taxpayer, is this, is this the time to do it? Granted, I understand we've put 135, 150,000 into the site work, but that is not, should not be the sole reason why we should be spending 1.7 million dollars on a new highway facility when we've just had this discussion here to find out that we're gonna be asked for more money in the future to put the fire department, the EMT, over into the old highway. I think we need to, I think we just need to take that all into consideration.
And all due respect, I, you know, I've seen other places where they have the highway and the fire, the police, all in a one large facility. And there is some argument for that. But I also, just to comment to other people's suggestions, I like the idea of having the fire department in the center square of town. Which seems to be the appropriate place for it. I don't know about anybody else, but I don't know if we can actually accomplish much more with this discussion. Are you planning to have a second hearing? Are we, are we beating a dead horse at this point?
I think we should have one, absolutely.
I'd be glad to, I've heard some suggestions there, we could come back and give some more talk.
Not a problem, I'd be glad to, I've heard some suggestions there, we could come back and give some more talk.
I think it would be nice to explore some of the options you've been given.
In terms of tonight, I agree, we're coming up on two hours, I think it's coming up to be, well, long enough. Unless someone else has more to discuss.
Just, um, just to follow from what I already mentioned, um, has there been any consideration of seeing if, um, there are any firms out there, design firms, that by, by specialty, design and construct, um, highway garage? You know, and I say that, that, you know, I think of, um, the architect you hired for school, um, education, K to twelve is one of their primary focuses along with private schools, that's the focus in architecture. Not so much a, a college dorm or a science building, things like that. They're more focused in what, that they specialize in. So there's a possibility that, you know, you may have an architect and an inn firm that could take the existing site, boilerplate, predefining, you know, design criteria, and say, yeah, we could probably land one of these other buildings, we have a project, you know, in Delaware. And I know you have to figure all the temperature climbing and all that, but there may be something out there. And they may be able to give you something scalable that you could put in, two heated bays, which would provide you the work area and water. Make it scalable so that you could add on additional days in the future. And that segue on with what's been talked about with fire department. So, um, I, I always think about, I'm thinking about value that we get for the dollar, make sure it's competitively good, we know what we're getting. And, uh, but then the other piece is, quite frankly, that, um, the community is quite extended right now. With a, with a flat, big loan on that we have at the moment, so.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, uh, expand on that a little bit. My name's Craig Moody, I don't come to these meetings often, I live at one twelve Pine Ridge Road, and I have since like ninety-two. And, um, my taxes went up considerably last year, uh, from four thousand to five thousand, my assessment did too. And I'm okay with it, but I feel the burden, and I think a lot of this town feels that same burden. Um, and to take on more of a debt at one point seven, not knowing that the cell tower is going in. Not having a contingency for a fire station is, um, reckless, could be thought out better than it was. Um, we talked about having a population of one thousand eight hundred people, and, um, it's gonna go down. I think that the tax rate is really hurting a lot of people in this town, and it's something that should be considered.
Thank you. Others? All right, motion to?
Well, the hour's up.
End the, uh, hopefully, we still have a regular meeting, but let's take this, this motion to end the public hearing.
Make the motion, please, uh, end the public, uh, meeting at twenty-three past eight, move back into our regular meeting.
In a second. All right, on favor? All right. I, I'm gonna offer just a short break, either to stretch your legs, or if you've heard enough and wanna go home, fine. We're gonna run the rest of the meeting in what I hope is an abbreviated format. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Scotty, you're staying? Scotty, you're staying?
I'm staying, as soon as I'm done, don't worry, I'll be here. I'm on right here.
Got some that you use.
Crunching here, fish.
Now, the public hearing is finished, minutes of the board's second meeting, February fourth. All right, I already read them. Good, motion to accept. I make a motion, using my voice, uh, make a motion then. Accept the minutes of the February fourth board's second meeting amendment of February fourth as transcribed.
Oh, second.
All right, on favor? I opposed.
John says I, we're good.
Good, welcome flyer. Uh, Laura, short history on how we came by welcome flyer.
Uh, it's just so when Kathleen, as the assessor, gets maybe new people that purchase a home in this town, or, so they know, like, some of the stuff that, like trash collection, beach stickers, bolt stickers, just something general that we can just have out, or she can send.
These are.
Do we have enough that we can offer to the public?
Well, no, because it's really not a final one unless you approve it, then I can give you one, like, I have to make it up. They're double sided, so I might get it.
There's some different parts to this, talks about licensing, like dogs, uh, vehicles, building permits, hunting, fishing license. These are things that would help a newcomer to town. Uh, talks about nail marks, it's supposed to be forty-two inches off the ground, so they don't get hit by a plow. Drive by permits are required, under registered vote. Trash collection, always a hot topic, because there's a calendar for two thousand nineteen talking about when trash is not picked up. And it says when the offices will be closed, and a list of all the various phone numbers, okay? Put it down. I've already had a chance to review this, I think it looks nice. Um, thank you, Laura, for putting this together, whoever else helped with it, I would suggest.
Burn a tree.
Crack it up, I don't know, a hundred of them.
I have a question for you, Laura.
Yeah?
Pick this tree, is that the old Spraguey Christmas tree, would they get rid of over here?
No, it was free clip art, I thought it was too. And it wasn't in colors, I wasn't gonna cross it.
Exactly. It's awesome, it looks great.
Tree of light, there you go.
Yeah, it looks more like a Halloween tree.
Could you get town hall on there instead?
Yeah.
Okay?
We could.
Yeah, good.
No, no, Tammy, no, Tammy wants this, this tree.
We were invited to that tree.
We print these off ourselves.
We did, yeah.
Hundred?
I can do a hundred.
You decided? That'd be available for people to?
Yeah, we'll put something on the corner, yeah.
All right, see how they go.
I think it's a great idea.
Go ahead.
Oh, some time ago, I presented an idea at, I think it was the PTA, PTO, and suggested a fundraiser. This looks like a, a good lead-in to doing not only some publicity for the town, but some fundraising as well. There, we have some great pictures, I think you and I talked before about pictures of the fire department equipment, the police department equipment. Uh, a picture of the school, a picture of the town hall. You can get somebody to put together a calendar for you with those pictures and market them.
Okay, you're talking about regular, like a wall calendar?
I'm talking about wall, wall calendar.
Twelve pictures of the town?
Yeah.
For sale?
I've seen people raise ten thousand dollars in a very short time or something like that.
Okay, good idea, yes.
I still have the information from the companies that do those.
All right, good, any else? Next item, appointment form for the town clerk. What's that?
Um, yeah, when you appointed Janelle, you never actually signed the appointment form.
Okay.
You can go back on if you want.
You need to give it to the public, you need to.
Down here?
Yeah, to the bottom, because you're appointed, so three twelve, so.
Do you guys wanna renege at this point or not?
You won't say anything on that, you know?
Three twelve.
Well, I gave it for, that's her appointment thing. I gotta go back, I'll go back to it, I have to, um, in her salary, that she signed, but we got to patchy, that's just what we have.
Does that mean she hasn't been getting paid?
That's all we need to know, you know? I didn't tell everything's signed, but, uh, and she still shows up for work, look at her, that's dedication right there. Give her some more gold. I wouldn't quite want that.
Okay, uh, under all business, I would, I'm gonna bring up for anybody that's interested in tomorrow night, two things going on tomorrow night. ZBA, zoning board of adjustment, uh, considering a request for a variance for the new cell tower. A height variance. The current zoning in town requires a maximum of thirty-five feet, the tower is a hundred eighty feet, okay? Sixty-five feet. A hundred sixty-five. Okay. The second thing that's going on tomorrow night is a snowstorm. We're still having the meeting. We've spent a fair amount of money to contact the avatars, surrounding towns, uh, ZBA people will be there. Uh, contacting the representatives of Blue Sky Towers, uh, they're available by phone, they don't wanna drive out in the storm. But we're having the meeting, all right, here. It's that, it's Saturday, we're here by six thirty. Blue Sky cell tower has put up a fantastic package, complete with pictures, without a cell tower and then with a cell tower. You get an idea what it'll look like from, I don't know, sixteen different views, all right? Jenna?
Can I just say on behalf of the ZBA, because I'm one of the members, that normally when someone submits a variance, it's one or two pages, maybe three or four pages. This variance is about fifty pages, and each of them is in a notebook for each one of the members. I mean, this is like the beaucoup thing of, you know, variances. So, I don't wanna delay it anymore, and if we have to have a teleconference, you know, uh, we can do it, they don't have to come. But they've done their due diligence and everything is detailed, beyond detail, inches and parameters and ramifications and specifications beyond belief. Roger, you coming tomorrow night?
Yeah, I'll be here for the tower company.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Uh, Robinhead, Robinhead's still here, I'll be glad to take information, otherwise I'm gonna cut in this meeting. I've just got my report. All right, well, thank you, John, anything special going on?
Nothing special, I'll wait for next one.
All right, Roger?
Are we on the cars?
Just wanted to know, you did get that paperwork from the other tower company?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Good, uh, we won't go over tonight, but, um, good, any else?
Well, I do actually, I have a BTLA, um, appeal, our, on John Carroll for a year.
What's BTLA? Bureau of Tax and Land?
Board of Tax and Land Appeals.
Good.
So, um, their decision has come in.
Is there?
BTLAs.
Okay, good.
Um, that they believe that, um, they didn't deny it, the, the appeal was dismissed, because they did not provide enough, um, evidence of their assessment. So, if they wanna appeal it, we'll have to go to, um, the state. The superior part, thank you, yeah, and it's only on certain things they could appeal, so there's that.
Good.
So is that, so they come to the town and we, and we, the town denied, and then they went to the next step?
So, yeah, the payments first, and then, like, Avatar will either give us our decision whether yes or no, then they decide on the recommendation of Avatar, and then it goes to BTLA.
Okay, so they, they've, they've done like the second part of it, so, okay, that's, that's what I thought.
There's usually a deadline, thirty days or something such thing.
And then this is for?
Reports, okay, good.
The taxes.
Taxes coming in pretty well?
Yeah, actually, not bad, not bad.
All right, uh, John, anyone else? Yes?
Could we put on record that people should not put their tax bills in the school's scholarship?
Did they do that?
Contender out there?
Sorry?
Um, we have the school deliberative Saturday, and you guys had more people at your meeting than we did in the whole school deliberative meeting. Um, and there's no school board meeting on Wednesday night.
And that budget on, because it's Saturday, was how much?
Huh, I don't know my paper would need.
Two, two hundred and six, uh, two million, two six, no, two million seven hundred, two point seven?
Whatever it was, it's more than we're talking about tonight. Okay? So, even though that was more, there were fewer people, so.
Yeah.
I thank you folks for coming here to show an interest. All right, any else?
Janelle over there.
Oops, yes.
The budget committee got a key, we walked out of the building for the third time in a row since November.
I let you in?
Yes.
Again?
Key to the back door.
Same, front or back?
Yeah, they go, if this door here shut the gate, it's through to the far, so they just come through the back door.
Well, they can get through that door. The rock's in the chair.
All right, me.
I don't get that, you have, can they have the key?
I just, who was, who's supposed to be here for our legally posted meetings?
Supposed to be me.
And so if you don't come, we're supposed to have a rep?
I'm supposed to let somebody else know, but if I'm busy, I get, not to get, not to get.
Yeah, she get called on the call, right, so.
Martha Stevens used to have a key. Check it out.
Martha Stevens used to have a key.
Folks, we shouldn't have to go to that room, that should be the selectmen going after a key, it should be us getting a key.
Shouldn't you have a key?
Well, I would like a key, because I have keys.
Uh, Laura, do we presently have extra keys?
Yeah.
All right, then two of you get together in the office tonight, it's gonna light up at some point soon, get a key, all right? All right, Monica before us, whoops, yes.
Town clerk, um, we implemented a new online registration for your vehicles, and also, we are doing mail-in now. We send out reminders in mail, and they can either go online and renew, or they can mail in.
Who gets a reminder? Everybody's going to?
Every month that's coming up for renewal, we mail a reminder.
When, when did? Everyone, include like selectmen, we get it as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. When did that?
Good thing, the selectmen forget. They do.
Nope, nope, nope.
Okay.
Uh, we got it all set up about last week, and then today was the first time that I printed them off to get them mailed.
Why will it not cost more in postage?
Because, you ready for this?
Right.
Or do you want? Yes, I do, that's great. Uh, we, we, we have a mailing fee on a registration now. So, really, you guys, you guys are getting it, not off, well, I am too, but, I know, it, it's, it's, to be honest with you, uh,
Oh, we'll still do it in the window, yeah.
For registration, so it's another fee on the registration for someone reading their.
It's just another option for the people to mail it in.
Is there a connection? Oh, no. Two dollars.
We don't like let folks.
No, I know, I know.
Finish cheaper.
Hold on, hold on, I can't hear everything.
So, a lot of people, the reason why we did it is because a lot of people were complaining about our hours. So it's very hard to get in here on a twenty-four hour, oh, well, I'd say thirty-hour, um, um, town clerk budget. Um, so, Janelle and I, and me came up with just having, um, man, because a lot of towns do it, they give you a reminder, a reminder notice, tells you how much your fee bill is gonna be, so you can plan that way, you can mail your payment in, we'll mail it back to you, or you can go online. So either way, if you go online, it's a dollar.
Or you can come in and do it.
Or you can come in and do it, but a lot of people are still having issues getting here.
Right, so, so the, the latest you're open is on Mondays until?
Three days a week, so five.
That's it, no, we don't have six o'clock in?
No, but you have, you have the last Saturday of the month.
Well, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, no.
The time is, if the time is, actually, no, I didn't have a hand. If, uh, if the, if the timing is an issue, would it be, is it something that would be revisited for hours? Or does the DMV have a perfect, certain time that you can no longer log in and run? I'm just saying, if you did till six o'clock, or, just filming it up there, I'm just asking the question.
Do you, do you want to answer that, or you want me to answer that?
We've discussed having later hours, having a later start time, and still just doing.
But even with later start time, people still can't get here. You always have that select few, or actually majority, that say, are, always don't work for them.
Right, no, and I get that, but I mean, at, at least I'm, I would think if you had one night that you were, sorry, Drew.
I ha, I have to say, the hours don't work every year to get the car registered, that thing.
Yes.
I think that was worth.
Same in every town.
Same in every town.
Most towns are not too, to be honest with you.
You have three options of how to register your vehicle.
Quick comment?
Most of them feel it's fair for them to stay that late.
According to the laws in the state of New Hampshire, how many hours does a town clerk have to be here?
It varies. Some towns do forty hours a week, some do twenty-four, some do thirty.
No, it's required by law.
By law, I don't know.
Zero.
Two hours per month.
Yeah.
Really?
It's very low.
Really?
Sweet.
So, it's just very, so how?
So, unfortunately, I have a job with my twenty-four hours, nine months.
So, you do when you get the fee back, so you guys will, no matter what, we No matter what, when you come here and register your vehicle, you still have that one dollar mailing fee.
Everybody.
Everybody, 'cause we're mailing the notices, 'cause we're giving you a notice every, every, um, a month to tell you what your estimate, 'cause a lot of people wanted that, they wanted to know how much it is, all that stuff. Most, majority of them online, but you have the elderly that don't have that, and they're used to paper stuff.
So we're actually making money.
So we're actually making money, yes, correct.
It stands for fifty cents.
Yes.
Put it to the highway clerk. More. The hour approaches.
You want the treasury report?
No, just
Is the place report?
We've got the report.
And the town clerk report.
Okay, but I really don't wanna take time to read them all now, looking at Clark.
We have money.
All right?
We got money?
Yeah. Okay. Any other business? Laura, any? John, Joe? All right, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn at eight forty-one.
Go over, John.